3:00 PM, January 26, 2021. I'd like to now call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation of political allegiance from council member Mr. Brad Childs.
Dear Lord, how thankful we are to have the freedom to speak the words, "One nation under God." Lord, we stand as one nation unto you, but also as one city under your loving care. Watch over us today as we plan our future and may you always direct our steps on our path towards the betterment of our community. I humbly pray for our staff and this council. I pray that we may always be leaders that believe in you as you watch over our meeting today, in your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Childs. On to item three, motion, motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article 8.1200 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Thank you. Item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
or not that item is on the agenda. And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker. Okay, motion passes, thank you. Item six, city announcements. Mr. Coons? Your comments aren't appreciated.
None at this time, Mayor.
Okay, none at the time. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow council to respond to items not listed on Number seven, ordinances. Consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, amending the the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, Chapter 8, Personnel Administration, department for prompt consideration. Article 8.1200. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration City Council Rules of Procedure Providing For a Procedure for Placement of Items on of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the City Council Agenda Providing an Effective Date Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict the meeting. At this time, I don't have anyone on the list, but if there is anyone who would like With This Ordinance Providing for a Separability Clause and Other Matters. to address the council, please speak up. First reading was January 12, 2021. Okay, if not, we will move on from citizen comments to item five, consent agenda. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, again, we had the first reading earlier in the month. This will give us a written procedure to allow either the mayor or any council member
All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion.
to place an item on the agenda.
There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests,
It takes one elected official, and again, that needs to be in writing, and then, and
in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered as part
the procedure that the rest of the staff uses, that person will be responsible for
of the normal order of business.
the information and presenting at the council meeting, and they are limited to a total of
Item five, a December 8, 2020, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes.
two agenda items for any one meeting.
And item five B, January 12, 2021, regular city council meeting minutes.
And those are regular scheduled meetings.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Yeah, we have a motion by Mr. Burge, a second by Mr. Childs.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. McKenna? Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Salter? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Item six, city announcements. Mr. Coons?
None at this time, Mayor.
Okay, none at the time. Number seven, ordinances. Consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, Chapter 8, Personnel Administration, Article 8.1200. City Council Rules of Procedure Providing for a Procedure for Placement of Items on the City Council Agenda Providing an Effective Date Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict With This Ordinance Providing for a Separability Clause and Other Matters. First reading was January 12, 2021. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, again, we had the first reading earlier in the month. This will give us a written procedure to allow either the mayor or any council member to place an item on the agenda. It takes one elected official, and again, that needs to be in writing, and then, and the procedure that the rest of the staff uses, that person will be responsible for the information and presenting at the council meeting, and they are limited to a total of two agenda items for any one meeting. And those are regular scheduled meetings.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item seven B, consider an ordinance of the City of Orange, Texas, amending certain portions of Chapter 8, Section 8.800 of the Code of Ordinances pertaining to the relocation of City Hall, updating the physical address only. First reading, January 12, 2021. Mr. Coons?
Again, Mayor and council, as you recall, we found a couple of spots in the Code of Ordinances that need updating because it still referenced the older, the old location of the City Hall. So again, should not have any effect besides just updating the address.
Okay, any discussion? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Can we have a motion for Ms. Henigan, a second by Ms. Salter? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Ordinance passes. Item seven C, consider an ordinance of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing participation with other energy service area cities in matters concerning energy taxes at the Public Utility Commission of Texas in 2021, authorizing the hiring of lawyers and rate experts, authorizing the city's participation to the full extent permitted by law at the Public Utility Commission of Texas, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act and declaring an effective date. Mr. Coons?
Mayor, council, again, as y'all are probably familiar, when there's items to do with the energy, we lean on the Walton Law Firm, as do other cities, and we kind of go with their recommendation. They guide us. But every now and then, we have to just renew that agreement with them, and that's what this is.
Make a motion.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item eight A, consider a resolution approving an Orange Economic Development Corporation infrastructure grant agreement with Tropical Vibes Daiquiris, LLC, 1408, 10th Street, Orange, Texas, not to exceed 50,000. First reading was January 12, 2021. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, sir, Mayor, council. It's a great day for the City of Orange. You see the agenda before you. There are four EDC projects that we'll be discussing. We'll take them one at a time. The first one, we'll be discussing Tropical Vibe Daiquiris, capital investment of 125,000. We committed 50,000 for related eligible infrastructure improvements at this particular site, and the project is underway at this point in time. So, we're completing the public approval process of the development agreement. So I'll turn it back over to you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any discussion on this?
No.
Okay, any make, any motions?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
I think this is a great opportunity, I know we've spoken about it before, but to see local entrepreneurs, and on this, we have several, so I'm going to say the other school as well, but to have a former West Orange Park alumni coming back and rebuilding in the city, that's awesome to see, so congratulations to them. Item eight B, consider a resolution approving an Orange Economic Development Corporation infrastructure grant agreement with T. One Needers at 2112 Dupont Drive, Orange, Texas, not to exceed 150,000. First reading was January 12, 2021. Mr. Trahan?
So again, this is a second project in Cove. I'll remind everyone, the Cove School project that was led by Planning Director Kelvin Knopf kind of kicked it off. This is our second project that will land in Cove on Dupont Drive, estimated capital investment of 440,000 to completely renovate an existing site along Dupont Drive before you get to Lottie's Landing and the Orange Boating Club, basically 150,000, not to exceed 150,000 in infrastructure improvements that go, will go toward building renovations as well as the concrete work, and this is, pretty well completes the public approval process in terms of the development agreement. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Nope.
No? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion? Did he say second?
He said second.
I'm sorry, Mr. Childs. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and once again, congratulations. I think this one is a Little Cypress alumni graduate, so now we've got one from each end of the, of the city, so that's great to see local entrepreneurs coming back to the city. Item eight C, consider a resolution approving an Orange Economic Development Corporation infrastructure grant agreement with T. One Needers at 2900 Sunset Drive, Orange, Texas, not to exceed 125,000. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, so Mayor and council, the first thing I want to do is acknowledge Mr. Ross Smith, who is a local business owner who was instrumental in terms of getting this project landed here in the City of Orange and specifically at the Country Club. So I always want to acknowledge our partners who are helping create this opportunity. Estimated capital investment of 500,000, of which 125,000 in EDC funding will basically go toward electrical and plumbing upgrades. And the interesting thing about this is the targeted job component is in the 100 range, many of them part-time jobs, but it creates opportunities for a lot of our residents here in the City of Orange and the greater Orange area for this opportunity. So I think at this point, probably most of us have visited the location, and they're doing a phenomenal business in terms of support from the community, so it's a great project of which a building was literally shuttered with no activity. So that was a huge win for the city, and they've been very successful in other markets. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Okay, any discussion? I know I've enjoyed it a couple of times already. It's wonderful, and I think it's going to help us bring in more restaurants like that to our community, so. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes, and congratulations to T. One Needers. Item eight D, consider a resolution approving an Orange Economic Development Corporation infrastructure grant agreement with Golden Jig at 1716 North 16th Street, Orange, Texas, not to exceed 195,000. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, so Mayor and council, I think we're all aware, this project is landing right next to McDonald's on 16th Street. Tremendous amount of site work has been done already. Got an update from the construction general contractor this week, weather permitting, they could potentially do the concrete pour either Thursday or Friday, looking for a late spring or an early summer opening, and what I've been asked to share is their menu is somewhat of a cross between Chick-fil-A and Chicken Express with an expanded menu. So it's a great opportunity for us to land this project, and out of a three-county region which includes Orange, Jefferson, and Hardin Counties, the project owner chose the City of Orange for the first project that he's going to do. So that's a big win for us, and we thank Mr. Karen Corporal and his corporation for choosing the City of Orange. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, and before you step down, I do want to ask you something after we approve this.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
And motion passes, thank you. Do you have a quick second to explain to the public who may watch this video of how we bring in new business? Because you see the comments on social media, and they're like, why are y'all bringing in another chicken place? And people need to understand, it's a free country. If property is for sale, it's open to anyone. Do you have a, can you like, give us a quick rundown on how that works?
This falls in line with the agenda items that we've just discussed. We're developing a reputation of a business-friendly city. We welcome new opportunity for capital investment, sales tax component, property tax increases in terms of our investment, not to the residents, but our property tax revenue that's coming to the city. So we're developing that reputation in terms of a city that is business-friendly, and we're open to new development, and it's, it's not something that we're going to say no to. We're going to consider every new business opportunity on face value based on its own merits.
Yes.
That's how you develop a reputation of a business-friendly community that's inviting in terms of a great place to do business, and we have worked on developing that, and I think that's what we've accomplished at this point.
Thank you for explaining that.
Sure. And I'm proud of that.
Yes, me too. Eight E, thank you, Mr. Trahan. Eight E, consider a resolution ordering a general election for the purpose of electing a mayor at large and a council member for Place One, single-member District One, providing for the date, hours, ballot, early voting clerk, and notice of election, providing for polling places and judges, providing for other matters relating to the city election, ordering a runoff election if necessary to be held on June 12, 2021, and determining that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law. Mr. Coons?
Not going to read the Spanish, man?
Yeah, I was like, I was about to try to read, I was like, no, I'm good.
No.
I don't want to, I don't want to be disrespectful and mess up a word.
Right, I know, just, hey, so you know, in 2020, the, the governor postponed, or COVID, how about that, we'll blame it on COVID-19, postponed the municipal election from May to November, so it's kind of a, you know, we didn't really get much of a break this year, but it's time for the municipal election again on May the first, so that'll be the general election, May the first, with early voting starting April 19 through April the 27th. But again, to get all that kicked off, we got to have a, the resolution, again, ordering the election.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Item eight F, consider a resolution entering into a joint election agreement services contract with the Orange County Elections Administrator to provide election services for the City of Orange. Mr. Coons?
Again, Mayor, as part of that election process, you know, we reached out to the Orange County Election Administration, who handles those elections for us. They, they've done a good job for us the last few years, and so again, we'd like to do that again.
Okay, sounds good. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Eight G, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Sidings Martin Emergency Group, LLC, in the amount of $698,384, $698,384.70 for the purchase of a 2021 Pierce Enforcer Custom 2,000 Gallons Per Minute High Clearance Pumper Fire Truck to be used by the Orange Fire Department Chief Renzel.
Yes, pardon me, Mayor and council, this is, this is part of the Hurricane Harvey Grant. It's been a long time coming, but there were $700,000 earmarked in this grant for replacement of a high clearance pumper for the department, and Sidings Martin had all the specifications that we put out, and so we'd like for you to approve this bit.
Wow. Well, I'll make a motion.
Second.
And this is a wonderful day for you, I know that makes it exciting, another new piece of equipment.
Right.
Yes, sir.
One-year delivery, but, but we will be sending a new truck about this time next year.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Eight H, consider a resolution authorizing and directing City Manager Michael Coons to submit on behalf of the City of Orange the substantial amendment to the five-year consolidated plan and the first-year annual action plan 2019, an application for CDBG, CV Disaster Relief Funds, to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Ms. Monson?
Yes, this is the round three of the COVID funds for the CARES Act funding. I met with the CAC, and their recommendations were administration was going to get $23,603. Orange Community Action, the Meals on Wheels program, would get $40,565. The Jackson Community Center will get $51,559, and the Greater Orange Area Literacy Services Goals will get $2,286. The total was $118,013.
Wow. So the Ja, no, the Jackson Community Center was excited.
Yes.
They've been working very hard the last few years.
Yes, and part of their big budget was that they're getting the body scanner for the entire building.
For the Meals on Wheels program, how, how much does that help them out right now? I know they've had, they've had some budget problems the last, for a while, haven't they?
Right, they had gotten $56,000 in round one, and it's, they've already spent it.
Wow.
So they were very excited to be able to get another $40,000.
Blessing, blessing.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Monson.
Thank you.
You hit the ground running, we really appreciate you. You've done a lot. Item eight, consider a resolution to amend Resolution Number 2020-106 to include the name of the financing source Republic First National Corporation for the five-year mile after mile lease of the Vector Truck. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. In November of 2020, the council approved the lease of our Vector Truck from Kenlok Equipment. At the time that we did that lease and that resolution, we didn't know the name of the financing source that actually handles the lease, so I had to do an amendment to the resolution. The, the financial institution is called Republic First National Corporation, and the payments are going to be approximately $67,000 annually for this Vector Truck for five years. There's an option for a balloon payment at the end, or we can return the equipment and get a new one. The mile after mile lease is also includes all the maintenance and repairs and such to keep our equipment in good shape. So the Vector Truck's already been received, so this is just a little cleanup so that we can get the financing handled.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Okay, item eight J, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number one with elite contractors and equipment for the Meeks Drive ditch improvements. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor, council, thank you. As you know, we're under construction now along Meeks Drive with our drainage program out there, and we have encountered a slight conflict with a underground water line that we need to relocate. So this constitutes a request for our change order number one to relocate a six-inch water line from an old Transite material that they used back in the 60s, seven, early 70s to a brand-new C900 PVC pipe, so we recommend this change order be approved.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf, motion passes. How many people do you get stopped by and say thank you for that new ditch? say thank you for that new ditch? Quite a few?
We've, we've had quite a few comments. We have.
I didn't realize that there were that many trees along that ditch line until y'all cut them down. And you see the stomps?
Yes, of course. We hate to cut a tree when, you know, unless it's absolutely necessary, but it was in the, it was on the edge of where the concrete needs to go, so we had to take it.
Well, we need drainage improvements, so thank you.
It's exciting. It's looking so much better. I see it, look at it every day to check the progress.
Can I ask a question?
No.
The comment section is open.
Okay.
We've been asking about what you're doing, and that's not even a question. The comment section is open.
Okay. The nine A is discussion and possible action regarding the old fire station slash parks maintenance building located at seventeen oh five MacArthur Drive in Orange, Texas. Mr. Wolf?
Yes, Mayor. As you may or may not recall, the old fire station located along MacArthur Drive was abandoned as a result of Hurricane Harvey in August of two thousand seventeen. Prior to the hurricane, the Parks Maintenance Department of Public Works utilized the building from two thousand and five to two thousand and seventeen. The Parks Department is recommending demolishing the building, after which the site will be restored for green space back into the park, back into Lindsden Park. And the Public Works, we respectfully request council permission to go forward with that demolition.
And I will clarify, if I may there, Mr. Wolf, we're not saying that space will become a park, but it's just going to be like a green area at this time. And so those folks who are at the park will have some, some green space, because again, there's some legal restrictions if we name piece of property a park. And at this time, we're not recommending that.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Okay, nine B, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of resolution to participate in a tax abatement reinvestment zone, Uniform Commercial Tax Abatement Policy, two thousand twenty-one, application, economic impact statement, and ordinance designating a reinvestment zone in the City of Orange, Texas. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, so Mayor and council, the purpose of this agenda item is to give you, as a council, an opportunity to just acknowledge receipt, have an opportunity to review the information, twenty-five pages of legal documentation that will tie into what will become a two-year property tax abatement program for the City of Orange. It will also include an application, the economic impact statement, and it'll result in a public hearing that will be scheduled at the next council meeting on February ninth. Our city secretary staff, Tricia and Jennifer, are already working in terms of the published notice that will print to position this new program for a public hearing that will lead to some additional activity. So we would just ask you to acknowledge it tonight of receipt and give you an opportunity to process the information, and then we'll come back with a public hearing on February ninth. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Any questions for Mr. Trahan?
I make a motion. We acknowledge the receipt of this resolution.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And this is a wonderful opportunity for our community. Thank you. Item nine C, consider a motion waiving and/or adjusting permit fees for ninety days for repairs to property due to damage from Hurricane Delta. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir. The ninety-day period to waive permit fees for repairs due to Hurricane Delta has run out, so you'll need to decide whether or not to extend it for another ninety days or, or just start charging permit fees for Hurricane Delta-related repairs.
I think, well, I know that there are still people that are still working on their properties at this time. I mean, you can look at the roofs, so I think it need to be extended.
Okay.
I would like to extend it.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to extend.
Okay, so we have a motion in a s-
For ninety days?
Yes, sir.
Ninety days. Oh, so we have to say for ninety days?
Yes, sir. You need to state the type here.
Say, either one of y'all?
I would like to extend it for ninety days.
Okay, we have a motion to extend for ninety days. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item nine D, consider a motion suspending section twelve point six one one, eleven C one of the Code of Ordinances for ninety days to allow parking, use, and occupancy in a recreational vehicle or travel trailer by a property owner due to Hurricane Delta-related damage to the inhabitable dwelling unit so as to make the dwelling unit uninhabitable. Mr. Knopf?
Yes, sir. The ninety-day period against, on the prohibition against living in an R B or travel trailer has expired, and so you'll need to decide whether to extend it for another ninety days or not.
I think we should.
Okay. We have, we have the motion. We have to say for the amount of days.
Yeah, I think we should for the ninety days.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Mr. Pullen?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf.
Thank you.
City Manager Report. Mr. Coons?
Mayor and council, the Planning and Zoning Commission will have a workshop, workshop on planning policies and procedures next Tuesday, February second, five thirty PM in the city council chambers. This workshop is open to the public, and the city council is encouraged to attend. So everybody has the opportunity to come and get a little education on, on, again, planning policies and procedures. And that is all.
Okay. All right, we'll start with city council report, starting, am I right, Mr. Pullen?
No comment.
Okay. Mr. Childs?
I'd just like everyone to put a date on their calendar. This coming Thursday at three PM, Don Corona with Orange County Drainage District and Commissioner Giant Trahan will be at Tommy Clary's down on White Oak to show the damage that Hurricane Laura and Delta has done to the bayou again. There are trees blocking the bayou, and they would like to just discuss it with the public. Again, that's three PM this Thursday on White Oak at Tommy Clary's home. That's all I've got.
Okay, Ms. Salter?
I had Mr. O'Neil give me a call and spoke about dumping in the Navy Edition area and requesting the gravel truck to make more stops if they could. We do know that, you